The meeting is now called to order. If you would, please join us as Vice Chairman Jerry Langley does our invocation, and Commissioner Waters will do our pledge. Please stand.
I pray, eternal God, our Father, we are grateful and thankful you allowed us to assemble here one more time, and we welcome your presence here to touch our hearts and minds concerning the business of your people in this county. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Turn to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Just a little bit of housekeeping. If you have a cellphone, please put it in a silence mode or either turn it off, please. Conflict of interest: is there any commissioner who wishes to disclose anything regarding any matter that is coming before the Board tonight? Hearing none, we're moving forward. The approval of the agenda? Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven to zero. Okay, we're down to public hearing. Ms. Roberts, welcome.
Hello. Today's public hearing has been called to consider the draft Beaufort County road naming and addressing ordinance. Notice of today's hearing was published in the Washington Daily News on January 28th and February the 4th. The draft ordinance has also been posted on the county website since January 22nd. This is a suggested replacement to the existing addressing ordinance which was adopted in 1993. This ordinance regulates addressing, address display standards, and road name standards throughout the county. And if you guys like, we can open the floor in public comments.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, we're up to items for presentation. Mr. Peterson, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Dave Peterson, and I'm the Senior Regional Director at Trillium Health Resources. And I'm here to do my annual report. I first want to thank Commissioner Langley. He is the Chair of our Central Regional Advisory Board, and he's been doing that for about five years now, so thank you for that. I also want to thank Beaufort County for allowing us to use your Health Department Conference Room, because that's where we hold our Central Regional Advisory Board meeting in the Health Department. And lastly, just to thank Jim Madsen, the Health Director here, because he is on our Regional Advisory Board. From the Regional Advisory Board, they appointed him to our governing board, and he's been doing that the last year, year and a half. And I'm going to go through this fairly quickly. There are some slides I may even just skip because of the 10-minute timeframe. But first, I want to just say who we are in this presentation, all the changes that are going to be happening with the Medicaid transformation, potentially down the road if we merge, or not merge, but partner with an insurance company, and some of the organizational changes. And then the very last slide is our Beaufort County data of people that we've served. But first, Trillium covers 26 counties, and we oversee about 500 companies that provide mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse services in those 26 counties. Of the total population, that's about 1.4 million people in those 26 counties. We have about 266,000 that are Medicaid eligible. Last year, we served 57,000 people throughout the 26 counties. And then there's the breakdown of about 71% of them had a primary diagnosis of mental health, 19% had substance use disorder, and about 10% had intellectual and developmental disabilities diagnosis. Our total cost and services last year was about 476 million dollars for services. Our smallest county, Tarrell County, and our largest county is New Hanover County, and we cover about 12,000 square miles. We're on the road quite a bit. This is just a breakdown of the map that we have. The only difference from last year is we added one more county. If you remember, two years ago, or three years ago, Nash County did not want to stay with the managed care organization they were with, and they joined us. This past year, another county was with that same managed care organization, and they wanted to join us also. So Columbus County, there at the very bottom, was added this past year. So we went from 25 to 26 since I presented to you last year. So here's what I'm going to spend most of the time with. About two years ago, the state said and decided that they were going to start changing our system. We serve the Medicaid population for those mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use, from anybody that has really low-risk services to anybody that has really high, high-risk services. And they decided to change that a couple of years ago and start this process. And it was awarded to these five insurance companies that you see in front of you: Caritas, Blue Cross, United Well Care, and Carolina Complete Health. They will be the insurance companies that when this does come to fruition, they will be the ones managing the low-to-moderate-risk individuals. We, as a managed care organization, will still be managing, like we do today, the high-risk individuals. All right? This in front of you now is the map, and those insurance companies, I'll reference them as the state references them, as the standard plan insurance companies. All right? This is the map of the standard plan insurance companies. All right? You can see there's six regions. All right? But there is seven managed care organizations. All right? But we will not be moving necessarily over to this map, and I'll tell you why in a second. What the state did, right now, there's seven managed care organizations, and they pulled together county commissioners from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, two representatives from each of the managed care organizations. So Trillium got to send in or make recommendations of who we thought would represent us well. And once again, Commissioner Langley was on that, at the table for those meetings, along with Commissioner Overman from Dare County. All right? And so we had two representatives at that state meeting to decide what the map would look like. And their recommendation up to the state was to keep the map the same. So Trillium, who continues to serve 26 counties as this moves forward, right now, that's how it's going to continue to look, that we continue to serve those 26 counties. And we will be managing the high-risk, high-cost individuals. So this slide says applications are due late winter 2020, because that's what the state's been saying to us. Well, we're hearing in a meeting about a week or two ago. They're now changing the term from late winter to early spring. We will be receiving the RFA request for applications. No one else can apply except for the current managed care organizations. And then we'll be serving the whole person. So those people that are going to be moving to the private insurance companies for their mental health needs, we will then be taking on the whole person. Right now, we just serve those three disability groups. And I'll talk a little bit about how we're going to be taking a look at the whole person. This was the timeframe that the state had set up on this transformation. There was going to be a first phase, and that got moved to February 2020. But on November 20th, the Secretary basically said, because the state has not passed a budget yet, we are postponing our transformation to go live as standard plans, those five insurance companies, and tailored plans, us managed care organizations. In a lot of ways, we're glad that they didn't put another timeframe on us for us to get ready for, and then it not happen. All right? So with that being said, everybody's saying when the budget gets passed is when those private insurance companies can gear back up to get ready to serve the people with low cost, low risk. And in the statute, it says, one year after those private insurance companies go live, then us as a managed care company can go live. So as you can imagine, this is a short session with the General Assembly. They're coming back in on April 28th. Everybody's predicting that they're going to probably be going home on June 30th. Everybody is, a lot of folks, I shouldn't say everybody, a lot of folks are saying most likely we won't see a budget getting approved. So that will just postpone all of this transformation that I've been talking about until a budget is passed, when most likely, and this is just my prediction, most likely when they come back into full session in January of 2021. All right? The impact today, so consumers that are currently being served in Beaufort County are going to continue to be being served by Trillium. All right? So no one's going to be moved over into the insurance companies until the state approves of the budget. We are still moving forward internally on developing our infrastructure to serve the whole person. And like I was saying earlier, right now, we serve the mental health side of the person, but we don't serve the physical side. All of us have primary care docs. All of us have pharmacies where we pick up our medication. There are thousands and thousands of pharmacies and primary care docs that we're now going to be having to contract with for Medicaid individuals. All right? So that's, you know, several thousand more contracts that we're going to have to oversee than, remember the first slide where we only have 500 contracts with mental health agencies? We're now going to have thousands of contracts with your primary care docs. All right? If they serve Medicaid consumers. All right? So some of the changes that have been happening because of all this, we have put together just a team that works on this whole transition process. We have also hired Dr. Garcia, because what he's going to have to do is also manage the authorizations for behavioral health, but he is also going to have to oversee the thousands of authorizations that potentially will be needed for your physical health, the primary care. We're going to be taking a look at our care management changes, because right now, our care managers just oversee the behavioral health side, but now they're going to have to oversee the physical health side of the individuals. All right? We do have another team that's going out and doing community development with members, and they're going to be focusing more on, I have a team of folks that focus on the mental health stuff in the communities. These folks are going to be going out and focusing on the physical health. They're going to be, and they currently are doing, health fairs and healthy eating classes. That's taking place in Beaufort County right now. We did hire a head of Department of Social Services and a head of Department of Juvenile Justice, because we're seeing as we move towards the whole person, we're going to have to make sure we have some good communications between those other departments. And then, like I said earlier, our network department changes, we're going to be contracting with thousands of new providers from the physical side of the house. So some of the funding changes, like I said, they will be getting, the insurance companies will be getting a portion of our funding. Right now, I'll explain real briefly. We get paid on a per-member-per-month, and it takes the full continuum of someone that's a really low cost and someone that's a very high cost. Now, if the insurance companies come in and are just managing the low-cost folks, all right, that per-member-per-month that we currently get will automatically go up, because we're only going to be managing the high cost for those individuals that are high-risk, high-needs folks. All right? And like I've been saying, we're going to be managing the whole person, not only the physical health, but also the mental health that we currently do. I'm going to skip most of these project updates. I will say, from one of the biggest ones that we've been working on and is just getting ready to get off the ground, is we've been contracting with a company that's going to be opening up some child respite homes for kids that are in DSS custody. All right? And that's been asked of us for a long time, and I think that's finally coming to fruition. All right? So we also are giving the lock zone kits out, dropped some off a couple of weeks ago to Brian, so we're doing that. We're doing CIT classes with law enforcement officers and so on. So the last slide here is just the specific Beaufort County data. Last year, last fiscal year, we served 2,824 Beaufort County individuals. 2,171 of those individuals had a primary diagnosis of mental health, 752 had a primary diagnosis of substance use, and 294 had a primary diagnosis of intellectual and developmental disabilities. And those numbers won't add up to the 2,824, because some of those folks are duly diagnosed and may be receiving services in both, or one or two, or even three of the disability groups. So I think I made my 10 minutes. So any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. You're welcome. I need to back up just for a second. Moving through the agenda, overlook to open the floor up to public hearings, I need a motion to, is there a second?
Second.
I was vaying. Is anyone would like to, anyone like to speak in regards to the ordinance that was presented by Ms. Roberts regarding road naming and addressing, changing address?
There she goes. Go here.
Second?
Second.
Moving on. Thank you. We're now down to public comment. And I want, whose phone is one of them? Before we get started, I'd like to say, speakers shall not discuss any of the following: matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office, including the candidacy of the person addressing the Board; matters which are closed-session matters, including but not limited to matters with attorney-client privilege, anticipate or pending litigation personal or property acquisitions; matters which are made confidential by law; or matters which are subject of a public hearing. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I take exception to this infringement on public speech rights. People should be able to come and say what they want to say. If they want to make a fool out of themselves in front of the whole county, they should be allowed to do that. This is three minutes that's set aside for the individual. If they want to use bad judgment, they can do that. This is an infringement on free speech. Mr. Manager, would you like to, or the county attorney?
Well, apparently, the Board passed a public comment procedures, which I think you were reading from, or at least those sections. So that's what our procedure says.
But I think probably we need to bring, that'll come up at the next meeting for another look, because it is an infringement on free speech rights. Mr. Chairman? Yes?
I think I was a commissioner when we started all this many decades ago. The idea was to allow the public to speak, because at that time, the public was not given that right. This is back in the 1990s. It started out, I remember specifically, that there had to, any speech offered by the public had to pertain to an item that would be on the agenda for that evening. We disregarded that after some while. I don't know if we took that off the agenda. But I do not specifically remember the case of disparaging speak towards us or anyone else, since that would be an infringement on free speech. So I kind of agree with Hood. We probably should take this up at the next meeting and really talk about it in a substantive manner, considering that folks come here, they should be able to say what they want to say and to whom. And we do not get the right to reply. Now, I really don't like that any more than the rest of you do. I mean, I feel like we should be able to challenge our accusers. However, if we want to change that, we should be able to change that, and we have the right to speak back. But I think we should allow them the right to speak and say anything they want to say.
Representative Kidwell? You have first. You have three minutes. Thank you.
We've got to remember all these rules while I'm going through. Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you again. Just wanted to come down and touch base with you all and make you aware that I'm here at your disposal. A couple of things I wanted to speak to, in particular, one is the Second Amendment's support resolution that you passed at a recent meeting. I wanted to express my appreciation as a member of the House and also as a citizen of Beaufort County. I think it's important that we continue to support that right and to make clear to our representatives in Raleigh that we will not stand for any infringement of that. So I appreciate that. Kudos to those of you that voted in favor of it. The other issue I just want to speak to very briefly is, recently I understand there's some work going on at the jail. We had some gridlock that we ran into with the state getting whatever approvals were needed. I just want to reiterate that I am here for you. When something like that happens, that's what I'm for. Okay? If we're not getting the things done that you need done through any state agency, please, at any level, either the Commissioners or staff, contact me immediately, and we'll do what we can to bring the pressure on to those people to get the things that Beaufort County needs. And with that, I'll yield my time unless you do have any questions. I know that's not your normal procedure, but I'll leave that to you.
I have questions. Can we ask questions? This is the public? It's an elected official. He's not the public.
Okay. Thank you all very much. I'll be here if any of you are hanging around. We appreciate it. You were here early, too, right? I mean, you were early to the meeting tonight. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Captain Swain.
Good evening, gentlemen. Want to talk about Proverbs 22:7 tonight. A small man wrote that. He said, "The rich rule over the poor, because the borrowers are the slaves to the lenders." As soon as we ask somebody for a loan, we're slaves. And that's really important, because willful waste makes for willful wrong. And there ain't no prestige in paying too much like we've been doing around here. And our forefathers also said that all of us, you fellows, should work per diem on the days we're supposed to get paid for days you work, because they figured that y'all would become professional politicians and then start voting yourself raises, and then instead of being of the people, you'd be above the people. And I called a bunch of y'all on my phone this week, and I mean, y'all are above me. Hell, I can't get most of you to call me back. But the thing about the new jail is it's not going to happen, because we've got to fix the old jail regardless. And the new jail, it's not a jail, it's a prison. And if you sign us up for that much debt, it's going to be twice what you say. If you say it's 25 million, it'll be 50 million. And it's a permanent bill. It's going to be paychecks, maintenance. We'll be slaves forever if y'all build that prison, forever. We won't ever recover from that. And another thing that's really bad is we've got a drug problem here in Beaufort County. And I'm tired of burying my friends. We've had, the only thing worse than a child had to bury their parents is the parent had to bury their child. And I've seen that this year, and I've seen children had to bury their moms over this fentanyl that's come to town. And we can't get our needs and our wants mixed up. Now, my hat's off to Chief Deputy Charlie Roos, because he's the only thing standing between us and the drug cartels. And he's trying to keep the kids off drugs. He needs a truck. The drug dealers watch these meetings, too. And the drug dealers are laughing at my buddy Charlie tonight, because he needs a truck, and we ain't got him one. And we need to be nice to Charlie when he comes in here. If he needs a truck, we need to do it. And I'm, I think we need to, I'm declaring a financial emergency here in Beaufort County. We don't need to spend another nickel till we figure out this referendum. It's been 15 years y'all been spending our money without asking us, and I think that's criminal. And I just want to get to the bottom of it. And if we can, we need to hold a meeting, and we need all the receipts, all the honey-do list we got piled up to a bunch of money. We need a referendum. The taxpayers need to see everything.
Thank you, Mr. Swain.
Thank you. Getting ready to pay for.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Whoop. Just a minute. John Carbone? Carbone? Is that right?
Commissioners, good evening. This is the public. I'm getting over bugs. Hopefully, my voice will hold out. My name is John Carbone. I've been a resident of the county here in Washington since 2017. Last month was the first county meeting, county commission meeting that I attended. I have a licensed attorney. I'm a board-certified psychiatrist, and I'm also a former director of mental health for the North Carolina Department of Public Safety. I've served in that capacity for eight years. To date, that is the longest-serving person who's been in that role. As such, I feel that after 31 years of practice, I have seen more people than anyone in this room who have no business having a gun. And unlike Commissioner or Representative Kidwell, I have come to express my severe displeasure at the tone of last month's meeting. I feel that the county commission had no business getting into such a divisive subject over which they have no legislative or legal authority whatsoever. Let's just stir the bucket some more for no reason. That's what we need in this country with so much polarization. But that's actually not the reason that I want to speak tonight. There is an old saying that if you repeat a mistruth enough times, it takes on the imprimatur of validity, which I don't want to see happen. Last month, one of the Commissioners made the observation in support of the resolution on sanctuary counties, that in the years leading up to the Nazi takeover in Germany, that gun laws had been increased, the implication being that we sure as heck don't want that happening here in Beaufort County. That is wrong on two counts, oh, and that the Germans, to this day, had not gotten their gun rights back. That is wrong on two counts. Number one, under the Nazis in 1930s, gun laws were loosened on everyone but Jews. So there is no truth to that statement. Number two, Germany, to this day, has among the highest participation in the EU of hunting clubs, target shooting clubs, and reenactment clubs. So there is no problem getting a gun in Germany. What they do have a problem with is background checks, something that we can learn from. So I come now to ask the commission in the future that if you're going to draw historical analogies, especially incorrect ones, that you look in the mirror first to see what might be looking back at you. And thank you. So there is no problem getting a gun in Germany. What they do have a problem with is background checks, something that we can learn from. So I come now to ask the commission in the future that if you're going to draw historical analogies, especially incorrect ones, that you look in the mirror first to see what might be looking back at you. And thank you.
Board of Commissioners, just here this evening, my name's Patrick Fitzgerald, and I'm the new director of Beaufort Hyde Martin Library System. And I'm actually just here this evening to introduce myself. I have no ask at this time. But I do want to express my gratitude for all your support in the past. And, you know, I look forward to working with all of you on, you know, how we can improve literacy and resources for our libraries in these counties, in this county specifically. Thank you.
Welcome, and we wish you the best. Thank you. Thank you. We're down to items for consent. Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second motion.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Five, two. Okay, we're down to items for decision.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm here tonight to give you an update on our e-recording project and to ask that you approve a cutoff time for recording millstone documents. And I'm asking for a 4:45 cutoff. Currently, the project is sort of stopped because the company that was, the company I was using has been purchased by another company. We're now with Harris Computer Systems. They purchased the software that Thompson Reuters was using for registers of deeds in November. And in December, I lost the gentleman that had been working with me. He was no longer with the company. So today, I learned who my new representative is going to be. And I have a conference with her tomorrow on the telephone. So I cannot give you a target date tonight as to when we'll begin doing this project or when it will go live. But I can come back at a later date if you'd rather not make a decision tonight. But I would ask that you make a decision and then later, I can give you a date when we're actually going to start the project, start the actual project of the recording.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go ahead and approve the stop, excepting transactions at 4:45 as recommended by Jennifer, our registrar of deeds.
Is that a motion?
Yes, motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Okay. Well, the reason for doing this is so that you can clear your records and finalize your accounts for the day, which you're required to deposit every day, I believe, or something like that. So it lets you run your department efficiently.
Yes. And one of the reasons I'm asking is that some of the feedback I've gotten from other counties is that electronic recordings will come in up to 5 o'clock. And North Carolina is what's called a race state, which means that whoever races to the courthouse with a document first is first in line for the, for recording. So if we have a 4:45 cutoff, it will apply to electronic recordings as well as walk-ins. And I plan to do an education part of this to let everybody know that that 4:45 cutoff time is coming, as soon as I know the date that it will actually go into effect.
Commissioner Booz.
All right. I did do, I did reach out to my fellow registers of deeds. I sent out an email to all 100 counties asking if they had a cutoff time. If so, what it was. And you have that information in your packet tonight. Only 38 individuals responded. I don't know why the others didn't, but I've sort of given you a synopsis up in the right-hand corner of the responses that I get, got from my actual inquiry. I don't know if those that didn't respond do not have a cutoff time or if they just didn't want to share how they handle cutoffs. One individual said that they, that they cut off electronic recordings at 4:45, but if a walk-in comes in, they may let them record, which is not fair. So I want to be fair and I want to let this particular project be successful. I think that, you know, people are open to this electronic recording. Right now, we report only satisfactions which don't require any money. There's no charge for satisfaction. And it's a very basic process that we go through. The submitter submits the satisfaction to us via email. We go to their site, pull it up, process it there, and then we have to do a dual thing by processing through our indexing software. We will no longer have to do that if we go with, go forward with the project.
Any more questions? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Seven, zero.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'll keep you in.
Thank you, Jennifer.
A copy of the draft Beaufort County road naming and addressing ordinance was included in tonight's agenda package. The ordinance has been made available online. It was posted back on January 22nd. And ads were ran in the Washington Daily News on January 28th and February the 4th. Have not received any public comments regarding this ordinance. The current ordinance, which is on the books and adopted, was adopted back in 1993. County staff and officials have recognized the need to update this ordinance. And that's why I'm here before you today. A wide variety of comments were received from the planning board, county staff, and county officials. Meetings have, were begun back in May of 2019 through the Development Review Committee. This facilitated comments from emergency services, the Sheriff's Department, land records, building inspections, environmental health, and the Planning Department. Feedback was sought in order to increase road naming compliance and addressing compliance and to allow for a more uniform system of addressing to facilitate emergency response and to reduce any addressing confusion within the county. This new ordinance better defines the requirement for road naming, making clear within Section 2 that when a third addressable building is erected along an unnamed easement, that easement must then become named through the petition process. Majority of the property owners must agree to the road name. If the property owners cannot agree or refuse to name the road, it becomes the address administrator's responsibility to name the road. And these road names will come before the Board of Commissioners as usual. The address ordinance also extends exclusions on duplication to zip codes that cross county lines. For instance, Grimesland crosses the Beaufort County line. So if there is a name that existed within that zip code within our county, we exclude that from road naming. And this ordinance also grants the Board of Commissioners the right to deny a road name which might have a high probability of theft, which would reduce any additional cost of replacing road name signs that are continuously stolen. That would be up to the Board of Commissioners discretion. This ordinance also better defines the standards for displaying address numbers. The display standard has increased to four inches in height, which is consistent with the state building code. It also requires that numbers be made of reflective material. These standards will apply to new numbering at the adoption of this ordinance, and they won't be retroactive. The only instance would be when numbers are missing or need replacement. Additionally, when applicants apply for a road, for an address, I'm sorry, their paperwork will let them know of these requirements, as they do now for the four-inch standard. The reflective standard will also be included in their address application so they're aware at that time. Additionally, they cannot be granted a certificate of occupancy until the numbers are displayed correctly. So we do put in the ordinance efforts to make sure people are aware and they're not caught down the road with an enforcement issue. The ordinance does increase the enforcement language, allowing the fires marshal office to issue a $50 daily fine if anyone's in violation of the ordinance. Individuals will be given a 60-day notice to come into compliance with the ordinance. There'll be a second notice since giving them additional 30 days. If they're still in violation, it would be a $50 day fine. Additionally, the ordinance also regulates road name sign standards to make more uniform the road name signs which were used. And these are issued through the Building Inspections Office. This ordinance would require that when we have private roads, that these roads be indicated on the sign, either at the edge of the sign with a private road label. Usually, these are yellow. We would follow that same standard. Or we could also apply a sticker to the road name pole. And also, road names, which are named through the subdivision process, it'll be the developer's responsibility to name the road through the subdivision coordination process. But the road name will not become official until the developer pays for the road name signage. And the board of, the planning board has unanimously recommended approval of this ordinance at their January 21st meeting. And so you guys are aware, this ordinance also would repeal the existing ordinance and would become the new official ordinance for the county. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Commissioner Booz. You indicated that this, that the current situation be grandfathered?
Correct. The only time that we would really have a violation for an existing number is if it's not complete, numbers are falling down, peeling off, then we would give it to the homeowner and let them know that they have to replace the numbers, and this is the new standard.
Okay. Can you tell me where in the ordinance it says that?
So that is...
Because I went through it fast. I didn't pick it up.
No problem.
So I'm probably missing it.
Okay, so Section 4, display of road address numbers. So number three, it states at the adoption of this ordinance, new numerals indicating the address number of a single family dwelling unit shall be at least four inches in height. So it states at the adoption of this ordinance, the new numbers will be four inches. Also, down at number five, a Section 4, the last section of number five, reflective material is required for all new numbers after the adoption of this ordinance. So anything that existed prior would not be in violation.
Commissioner Booz.
Do any of the volunteer fire departments still install these signs or is it strictly the CADDI under contract now?
For the actual signs themselves, it's the CADDI under contract.
CADDI contract?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the ordinance. Is there a second?
Just if I could, anytime we talk about road naming and signs and house numberings, we always want to say again, and we talked about this, and that's why you'll see in this ordinance a couple of things about vandalism and about stealing signs and those kind of things, and the opportunity to allow this board to deny a road name that may be assigned that might be stolen quite often. It's not just a monetary cost when somebody steals a sign. And we have, we have a problem in Beaufort County with people stealing road signs. That might be funny. People might think that's funny. And they say, "Well, that's no big deal. That's just a kid wants that name to put on their wall." What I would say to you is, it's not only a monetary issue, but think about every law enforcement officer, every fire official, every EMS employee that's going to your house to help, help you save your life or do something. And they miss a road because a sign is gone. Somebody stole a sign. It has life and death consequences. People don't think about that. And what we want to do every time we talk about this is bring that back out in the public because people don't need to be stealing road signs. Thank you.
Well, we have talked about this ever since I've been here with people stealing road signs. Last month, we talked about the head of, it's against the law to do it. So let's sweeten this part up a little bit. Let's put a ransom out there. Whoever, turn in somebody that said they stole a sign. You won't have to break up about two of them.
There may be an opportunity through Crime Stoppers to do that. I think there are some opportunities. But again, it is a, it is an issue in Beaufort County. It really is. We are replacing a ton of signs. I don't know where they're going. They're not going to the scrap dealers because the scrap dealers now are required to check all those things and make sure people aren't stealing. So there are a lot of signs that are on people's walls, and the first time it causes somebody to be five or 10 minutes late, or five minutes, two minutes, 30 seconds late to a call because they missed a road, and somebody dies, it has, it has life and death consequences. People don't think about that.
Anyone else? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Seven, zero. Thank you.
I have a question. This passed unanimously, so the ordinance takes effect tonight.
Good evening, Commissioners. I come to you tonight with a request for your approval to reclassify four positions at the Department of Social Services. Those four positions are all currently classified as income maintenance supervisor ones. We would like to reclassify those four positions to income maintenance caseworker threes. I will go ahead and let you know that those are the same pay grade. They're a pay grade 14, so there are no budgetary impacts for that. At this time, the salaries for these people will remain the same. One of the positions is currently vacant, and three of them are occupied. We have had discussions with those three employees, and they are in agreement with the reclassification. The reclassification has also been approved by the Office of State Human Resources. So we're here tonight to request your approval.
Motion to approve. Second. Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Seven, zero. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Mr. Carney Hedges, please.
Get this thing down to my height. Thank you, Chairman Evans, Vice Chairman Langley, and Board. Emergency Services was approached by Nutrien about the possibility of entering into a contract in which we could provide them an EMT paramedic that could be utilized in the industrial setting as well as all the other certifications and abilities that they would have. With that, there are some specific things they were looking for in the industrial setting that the normal paramedic would not have. Thus, we have, have looked at a title, as I'm coming before you, of an industrial EMT paramedic. Some of those things are performing vision, audio pulmonary function testing, drug and alcohol testing there at their facility, medical charts, and still being able to respond both locally on the plan itself and out in the county if we needed that through mutual aid. We're currently putting together the contract for this. This would be, just a few specifics, this would be a county employee with all county benefits, and it would be as the contract exists. All costs for the position would be absorbed by Nutrien. We believe it's a great way of showing support to a company that certainly has helped us out in Beaufort County. The position also would be available to help us in times of disaster or backfilling shifts on weekends. Because of the title of the position and the additional responsibilities, we are going to be requesting that the job be classified as an industrial... to be requesting that the job be classified as an industrial paramedic at a pay grade of 18, and that's a pay grade up from the typical paramedic. This position would be funded, again, totally by Nutrien through a three-year contract. In addition, Nutrien would provide any site-specific training that they would need. What am I asking for tonight's a little bit different than what you have on your agenda abstract. I'm asking you to approve the concept of the county going into a three-year contract. Obviously, you would not want to approve a contract that you've not seen yet. We didn't want to bring that into you last minute. So, what I'd like you to do is think about approving the concept of the county going into this three-year contract with Nutrien a negotiated price of $80,000 a year. With that, upon contingent, contingently approving the contract, approve a new full-time position for Beaufort County EMS, and approve a new position of industrial paramedic in our pay grade, at a pay grade of 18, again, contingent on you approving the contract next week. So, really, we just want to know, you feel confident about us putting forth the effort and moving forward to bring this back in a final contract next meeting?
Number one, who's going to select and hire this employee?
In the contract that we have started with so far, first of all, the employee would be a sole employee of Beaufort County EMS in the contract, and Nutrien has agreed with this so far, what we've put together, they would put one person on our hiring committee, and then it would be our office hiring in our normal practices.
Won't work. Does this employee going to report to work where?
The day-to-day operations would be at Nutrien, under the Safety and Health Director at Nutrien.
The day-to-day supervision would be under the Health Director at Nutrien?
That's correct. But would fall under our command structure.
I've got, I've got a problem with these government-industry things. What's the advantage to Nutrien in doing this?
The advantage to Nutrien in having a paramedic, the, the paramedic works under local medical direction, Dr. Penley is our current medical director, and allows a high level of medical service, but not being a nurse, it's at a paramedic level. So, paramedics have the ability on scene to do things that nurses can't even do at the hospital, that requires a doctor to come in. So, it's having on-site medical attention that in some cases, in life-saving cases, would, would be greater than if they were to just put a staff nurse on-site.
Why can't Nutrien hire an employee and require that they be a paramedic, pass the test, et cetera, et cetera, and be qualified as a paramedic?
They could hire a paramedic, but the paramedic still has to go under a medical direction through, county has given general statute for EMS across the county, so then putting this position in under a fault to provide what a paramedic would provide, would go under a medical direction such as our EMS system.
This employee's going to be administering audiology tests, other tests to employees of Nutrien. Historically, companies have had their own medical experts that they brought in to do these kinds of things.
And in this case, Nutrien, that's not something the typical paramedic would get in training, that will be additional training that would be provided specifically by Nutrien?
There's just something strange about this, that's not necessary at all. And frankly, I'm not interested in entertaining, I want to cooperate with Nutrien all we can, they provide a lot of jobs here, they're very important to this county, so what I'm saying is, is nothing negative on Nutrien, but I don't want to do this, it's too complicated. You have an employee down there who is, who has two masters, and we all know what happens when you try to serve two masters. So, I think this is a bad idea myself, from what, and I've worked in industry, and I'm aware of what goes on in industry, and I'm aware of how they do things, this is not how they do things.
Any other questions?
Is there any other precedent for this type of arrangement that you know of?
I'm not sure in North Carolina, across, across the United States, there's, there's thousands of industrial paramedics. Big companies utilize them, take an oil refinery, put one on a rig out somewhere, just as one example. But if you were to Google industrial paramedic, you, you would see some of the companies that offer just that particular...
But are they then still under their, the county?
They have to come under some medical direction, it's depending on the state, what, you know, what the laws would allow that to happen.
So, they really don't have a choice if they're going to use a paramedic?
I'm not going to say they don't have a choice, I, I know what Nutrien is looking for, this is going under their emergency response division, is they're looking for an individual who would be able to help with the staff day-to-day things, but be able to respond as an emergency paramedic on-site. And so that brings them back under our umbrella to be able to do that.
Commissioner Waters.
I mean, like I said, fore-stated, I don't know much about what you're talking about, but I got some, some concerns. If this person will be a sole employee of the county, and that means the county absorb all the liability, if something, if something happened, is that correct?
I wouldn't say all the liability, but obviously, the employee just as any other employee would be.
I mean, if somebody was, if something happened on-site at, at Nutrien, and the person passes away or something like that, then the liability falls on us, or some of it.
The, the medical practice, the person performing under their job description as a paramedic would be the same as, as them performing for us, yes.
Okay. Well, I don't have a problem with the concept, but I, I just need some more detail about it, I, I mean, if you, if you asked me to, right now, to vote on that, I probably couldn't, couldn't support it, but I, but I, but my, my mind is open to more information that you can provide me with.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Richardson.
All of these high-risk companies, like oil refineries, the mining industry, chemical plants, oil rigs offshore, they all have highly trained people in, in medical practices and medical services for emergencies. So does, so does Nutrien for that matter. So, I, I don't see the need for this, there's something else going on here, and I don't like the merger, I don't like the county taking on the liability, I don't like the county taking on the responsibility, because if Nutrien has an emergency, the minute you call EMS, whoever is, is a certified, if he's an employee of Nutrien, comes under Dr. Penley, if it's already been approved, if he works for Beaufort County EMS at all, or goes through our system, so I see a useless exercise here.
If I could just add, add to what you're saying there, any, any EMT across the county would fall under in a basic level, but at the advanced level, they can only respond if they are a part of that advanced level. In other words, just an employee at Nutrien would not be able to respond at an advanced level, in that Nutrien currently as an EMS unit, they have an EMS unit, but they're at a basic level.
Well, that's true, we don't, we don't disagree on that. So, again, they, they in essence have the service, all they need is for an employee to be trained up to the EMT level, they still have the same service, so why are we going through this $80,000 a year exercise for nothing? I don't see an advantage in it, I see a complication.
What's the pleasure of the board, do we need more research, or what do we want?
All this asking for is the concept, I don't have a problem with that, but I mean, I'd like to have more information, I couldn't vote to, tonight, to do it, but I don't have a problem with this concept, and I got a lot of questions that need answered.
Can you vote for the concept?
Yes.
Can you make that motion?
I make a motion that we vote for the concept and concept only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Five. All those opposed? Two. Motion passes. Brings back the concept. There you go.
Mr. Chairman, tell us what, or from the board's perspective, what you additionally need, would you like for Mr. Wallace, for us to have Mr. Wallace come and speak as well, as the director of that? I'm sure Mr. Hedges can have him do that. Obviously, there was a concern about some liability issues, we can certainly work through those. Are there any other specific pieces that we need to make sure, you know, the, I'm sorry, David?
I think the one hang-up right now is, is the state law require that those people fall under the county? If it does, then that makes things different. If it doesn't, then, you know, you've got this new dotted lines of, of supervision.
And Mr. Hedges can verify that for you?
I mean, it's got to be of the industry in this area that we can at least ask around, and then have the gentleman come down from Nutrien and whatever, but...
This is a, this is a new concept, absolutely, it's something that would be new, and it was, you know, they, Nutrien reached out and requested that to see, for our support in that.
Commissioner Waters.
I, I guess I'm concerned about the liability. I, I would say that we probably need to have some conversation with our insurance carrier, just to see if they give us a green light, or if they have some concerns, but other than those two, I think we need to...
You could probably write something into the contract with regard to liability.
Well, I'd be more concerned about what the insurance company, our carrier's saying on it.
Will we be able to bring that back as well?
Any other questions, Brian? We good? Mr. Francisco.
Yes, sir, we have eight offers, bids on property the county owns, that they have received from foreclosures, you see them there on your sheet, they are at various locations, Pantico, Aurora, Washington, Chaco Innity, Chaco Innity, Aurora, Redson Township, and Redson Township. These, again, have been traditional low offers, but that is getting these, if, if these, you are approving, or would be approving, the, the bottom line here, we've got offers of $250 for the majority of them, and then, well, for half of them, and then you've got an offer for 100, and then three offers for 50. It's, I think, a pretty good guess that the ones for 50 will be upset bids, we've already had one that lasted about two days and was upset before we came here tonight. So, these are all, we have minimum deposits made on these, so if, if you approve here, we'll monitor it, and we'll put them in the paper, and if the bids go up from here, then they will be approved bids. So, the suggestion here is to approve these eight, so that we can roll on with it as we've done in the past.
Commissioner Richardson.
I'd like for the board to relieve me of obligation to vote on this particular issue. One of my clients has made the bid for over half of these properties, we usually wind up providing him services, so I don't, I don't want to bug my pocketbook, thank you.
Medical motion to excuse.
Yeah, a second.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Six. Seven, I guess we all have the same. Yeah, you have the same. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would, I would make a motion that we approve of the eight bids, be it the minimum bids, which would later be advertised for upset bid.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven, zero. Seven, zero. I'm sorry, six, seven. Don't, don't put it... Christina.
As a reminder, Beaufort County was awarded a disaster recovery grant in the amount of $296,300 from the Golden Leaf Foundation to install generators, as well as automatic transfer switches at the Yatesville Booster Pump Station, as well as the Beach Ridge Booster Pump Station. Bids were advertised twice, and we received one bid on October 22nd of 2019. The low bidder was Wilson Roads Electric of Greenville. Unfortunately, the low bid was in excess of the available budgeted funds. The project engineer has engaged in negotiations with the contractor, but due to market trends, the bid value was unable to be reduced. Due to the needed funds, staff requested additional funding from the Golden Leaf Foundation, and we were very excited to learn last Thursday that we were approved for an additional $70,164.92. You should have received a revised budget amendment at the meeting tonight, is that true? Therefore, based upon the project being fully funded by the Golden Leaf Fund, our recommendation is to award a contract to Wilson Roads in the amount of $285,394, as well as the associated budget amendment.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those, seven, seven, zero.
Thank you.
You name. Okay.
The next item to be discussed is the revision of the Beaufort County Water Department rules and regulations. The rules and regulations for Beaufort County Water Department were last approved in 2003. Since that time, many changes have occurred in the industry, as well as the day-to-day operations of the Beaufort County Water Department. Staff recognize the need to update the rules and regulations to reflect current operations, to standardize language, as well as to provide customers with accurate information. Staff met numerous times to review what we thought were needed changes. The staff committee consisted of Anita Radcliffe, the finance officer, Sharon Rose, deputy finance officer, Connie Grady, fiscal utilities manager, Eric Jennings, water systems manager, Philip Malcolm, the distribution supervisor, as well as myself. We then went through, made recommendations, met with the water, or, excuse me, the Board of Commissioners Water Committee, which consists of Commissioner Langley, Commissioner Evans, as well as Commissioner Reddick Holtz, and previously Commissioner Brennan before he passed away. We were able to go through many different items. Obviously, the rules and regulations are, it's a very large document, and it contains a lot of information, and since it had not been revised since 2003, there were many items to be discussed. What you have in your agenda book is the full red-line document. I understand that it's a little difficult to go through, to go through, to look, to see what the changes were, but I felt that it was important that you had that document before you, so that you could see actually what was revised. Kind of a, a high level of those changes, just to pull some out, is that the, the first thing that we did, as I said, is to clarify the language, so some of the language was very difficult along the lines of legalese, and we wanted to clarify that, and as well as simplify. We also wanted to remove any dollar values that were included in the rules and regulations. Obviously, fees that were charged in 2003 are at a different dollar amount than what would be charged in 2020. So, what we wanted to do is to remove all, all dollar amounts from the rules and regulations, and those would now be shown on a fee schedule. And this was something that the county started a few years ago, when County Manager Alligood came, so that we now have a fee schedule that is included in the budget process each year. So, that would be the plan from this point forward, that we would include fee schedules with any changes as part of the budget process, and also that this would be a living and breathing document, that we would present any changes needed on an annual basis, and so that we did not go such a long period of time between revising the, the rules and regs. Some, again, some of the highlighted items would be revising the classifications of service. This would be, currently, we have residential as well as commercial, we would like to break that down farther and say, excuse me, farther, and say residential, excuse me, the recommendation is to have residential, commercial, institutional, industrial, as well as municipal classifications. So, that gives us a little bit more leeway, the annual reports that must be prepared each year for Department of Public Water Supply requires us to break that down, so we do not have a accurate way in our software in order to do that, so we just do it by knowledge of our customer base, but as our customer... our customer base. But as our customer base continues to grow, we would like to have that information in our billing system. The current recommendation is to charge institutional the same rate as residential, and industrial the same rate as commercial, and municipal would be defined as in the interlocal agreements. Also, it updates signup procedures, because, again, previously you had to be in person. Now it allows people to sign up via electronic communication. It also provides a more thorough listing of documentation that would be required for people to come in and to set up accounts. It eliminates the return of deposits. The old regulations, after a certain period of time, the deposits would be applied back to the account. Again, as we've had discussions previously, the Water Department is an enterprise fund, and the way people think of that is to run it like a business. So staff felt that by returning deposits, then you still have, you have exposure. So we felt that we should hold the deposit, and so that if someone discontinued paying their bill, we would be able to apply that deposit to their outstanding balance. Strengthening tampering language, again, that's something that has been discussed numerous times in the past. So that strengthens that language, so that if someone tampers with Beaufort County Water Department equipment, they damage the equipment, then we are able to, it, it's clearly stated that we are able to charge that customer on their account for the damage of the property. It also strengthens the customer responsibilities language, as far as easement, so that people are unable to plant bushes, trees, along our water lines. If someone comes in and paves the road above our water line, and then there's a water line failure, then we would not be responsible for putting the asphalt back. Again, we're just clarifying that language. The previous document did not clarify that very well. It also adds language regarding agreements with other utilities. Back in 2003, I'm unaware of any interlocal agreements that Beaufort County had with other utilities, but we do have agreements now with the town of Chaco Innity. We have some shared customers. The town of Bellhaven, if you recall, the sewer pump stations that are located in an area west of Bellhaven. So they are Beaufort County Water Department customers, but they are the town of Bellhaven sewer customers. So based upon the interlocal agreement that we have, if they fail to pay their sewer bill, they cannot cut their sewer off, but we can discontinue their water service. So we want that language in our rules and regulations, so that everyone understands that concept. Also removes USDA references. Again, as you recall, the Beaufort County Water Department was installed based, based upon a series of contracts with USDA Rural Development. Since those loans were paid back in, I believe, 2012, we are no longer required to have the USDA requirements in our rules and regulations, since we are no longer under contract with them. Any questions regarding the rules and regulations?
Questions?
There are a lot of changes since 2003.
What's the deposit?
I'm sorry, $50 deposit.
$50.
I'm sorry, we increased it to $100.
And how long now?
At the, at the, right now, you return the $50 back after how many months, how many years?
We returned the $100 back after 12 months of good payment history on the account.
But that's the only problem I have. I want my money back. If I went 12 months, and you told me I'm gonna get my money back in 12 months, I want my money back. That's the only problem I have with it.
Well, if these were approved tonight, then people that signed up yesterday would receive their deposit back. Yes, sir, that, the rules would be, if they are approved tonight, then that would be in effect tomorrow. So if someone signed up for a new account today, and they had good credit, then their deposit would be returned within 12 months. Also attached is a, a fee schedule, which has revisions. And this is a revision from what was included in last year's budget. And that is due to, there are two changes that are there. First, I'll talk about the tampering. We expanded upon the tampering because the, the AMI project, there are actually additional components in the meter box now. So we have, have first occurrence, and then we have five different situations of damage that could occur. And so we've broken out each of those different pieces, so that we did not want to just have one extremely large cost. If someone just damaged the cover that's on top of the meter box, we didn't want to charge them for an entirely new meter, as well as radio transmitter and everything. So this is very clearly has cost for each component. That way, it's much clearer, it's easier for staff to understand, it's easier for customers to understand. As many of you saw, I had a mock-up of a meter as well, a meter box, as well as the meter and the radio transmitter for you to look at previously. We're making those. We will leave one of those in the room adjacent to this room, in the Financial Service Center, for the customer service rep, so that when customers come in, and they have a question, that they will be able to have that there to show them that this is what's, was damaged, therefore, this is the cost. So again, as our mechanics go out, if they see the damage, they'll take a picture of it. It's very clear what had, what was damaged and what needs to be replaced. Along those same lines, also showing a increase in the tap-on fees. Again, that goes to, because there's additional equipment in the meter boxes now. With the AMI systems, you have a meter, as well as a radio transmitter. So the cost to, to install a service, the actual material cost has increased, it's, as well as the AMI, but it's also just because of the increase in material cost. Did an analysis back in February of 2017, which is when we last priced the tap-on fees, the actual material cost was $410.22. Today, it is $680.96. So again, that's due to an increase in brass costs, as well as just an overall increase in material costs.
Commissioner?
Christina, for someone who has a summer cottage...
Yes, sir.
...and they want to cut their water off...
Mm-hmm.
...leave the deposit, all they have to do is pay the $50 to reconnect, say, four months later. If they, if they leave and, what the word off say, for six months?
Mm-hmm. Yes, yes. Yes, that's correct.
They would leave the deposit.
And pay the reconnect fee of $50.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the changes? Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Six, one. Motion passes. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to items for discussion. Commissioner Richardson?
Where we, uh, jail, uh, progress placing these...
We're pretty much where we were last month, because they're in fabrication. All of the materials, the order has been placed. When we're looking at the actual doors and the sliders, Southern Folger, MTS has placed the order with Southern Folger. Right now, the specific sliders, they've given me a tentative date of the end of April, but I do not have a definite date. That's what they're looking at. MTS, as far as the electronic components, they said that they have no problem. They are, they are manufacturing and fabricating those as we speak, so they see no anticipation of any delays. Still waiting, again, what I have, as I said, the MTS has not notified staff of any pending delays regarding that, so we're still waiting. However, county maintenance staff is currently identifying other maintenance items that can be addressed while the inmates are housed at an alternate location. So I've had discussions, general discussions with Lieutenant Brian regarding that. So we'll do an overall cleanup of the facility, you know, sanitizing, miscellaneous painting. There are some plumbing issues that need to be addressed, and things like that, that we are planning on doing while the inmates are somewhere else.
Representative Kidwell mentioned a snag or a rough spot in getting this repair approved by the state. What was that?
I'm not sure. There was a little bit of delay in that, as far as the, the timing, as far as what they told us, that they thought that they would have it reviewed in. And then there was, I don't know, maybe about a week or so, where they were short-staffed, and people had been out of the office. Any other questions? Thank you.
Item number two, jail population and staffing. Commissioner Richardson?
Well, I was hoping that the chief deputy would be here tonight, but it seems that he and the sheriff have decided, since we did our budget meeting, that they're not gonna show up. So I'm, I'm gonna ask, is, is the chief deputy here? Is the sheriff here? Or is any representative of the sheriff's department here? Then I'll ask the manager, was the sheriff's department notified that this was an item on the agenda? Well, let me give you my version of what's going on in the jail. This is another rigged deal that's costing the taxpayers of Beaufort County a lot of money. As you just heard, a four-month delay while some 60 prisoners are kept out of county, and it costs $3,000 a day plus transportation, on and on it goes. Some of my observations are that very little of the overhead in the jail, while, while more than two-thirds of the jail population is away, it has been taken out of the jail. As a matter of fact, there are some people working in jail that are working more hours than they were working when we had a full jail population. So my question was gonna be to the sheriff and the chief deputy, what have you done to reduce cost while you've been wasting all of this other money? And I'd also point out to the people of Beaufort County that no one in this county has yet called for anybody to repair a jail locking mechanism. This was set up to be a bad deal for the taxpayers of Beaufort County. These people were hoping that they were gonna get a new jail out of this by creating an emergency. It didn't work, mainly because Commissioner Deathridge and I were on to it right away, even though the board chairman refused to call an emergency meeting to address this. We're gonna have $2 million of wasted money in this useless exercise before it's over with. And that is your money, and that's taxpayers' money, and you don't have a sheriff that has the respect for the taxpayers to show up and tell us what he's doing insofar as wasting money and managing this department. This is an outrage, and taxpayers should really be upset about this, and you should be willing to make the changes that are necessary to get control of this situation, because there's millions of dollars going through the sheriff's department that is totally wasted money. And I'm offended that he has no more respect, although he is an elected official, to show up to address this board, because we have his money. He gets his money from these guys. So if the money's being wasted, you don't need to look at the sheriff too. You need to look at this board.
Let me go back a bit into, I pulled the, some service maintenance from Georgia Detention Center, and it goes back to December 17, 2015, 2016, again, in August of 2016, December of 2016, 2017, June, between nights of 2017, 21st of June of 2017, December 19th to 27th, repairs were made, February of 20, 2nd of 2018, June of 2018, October of 2018. And then it was a scheduled visit for 2018, December 2018, not done per Georgia Detention, because they said it was no benefit at this point. Basically, the phone call made and said, there's nothing I can do. That is made out of scrap, that slider's made out of scrap metal, cannot, there's no repairs anymore. You can't fix it. The call was made.
Well, you and I are in total disagreement. One of us is lying.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I took a look at the recap of our inmates on February 3. We had a total of 47 in the Beaufort County Jail, and we had a total of 30 that were in safekeeping. Twelve of those were in Anzola County, seven were in Craven County, five in Cabarrus County, four in Dare County, and then there was two, I'm not sure I understand these initials here, NCCIW, and the other one was CP, Safekeeping, but I'm assuming they're in Raleigh.
Prison.
Okay, Central Prison. So, you know, if you take the 30 people that were away at $55, which is on the high side, based on numbers that we've used in the past, that's a total of $1,650 per day, times 30 days, is $49,000. So it is not the exaggerated number, the misinformation number that was quoted by Commissioner Richardson.
Commissioner Waters, again, you and I totally disagree, because you're using numbers that are convenient to you. We've got at least a million and a half dollar contract in here. We were just asked for another half a million dollars during the budget session two weeks ago. So there's a lot more money in this that meet, than meets the public's eye. These guys are running their cover-up that they've run for the sheriff all along.
Commissioner Waters?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, here again, I want, I want the citizens of Beaufort County to understand, this guy's running for reelection. It says Board of Commissioners Information Packet for February 2020, and here's a report, right here. That's the report. Now you tell me that that's fictitious, Commissioner Richardson. Tell me. Apparently, you've not read this. You've not seen this.
Frankie, I'm the one that got that reported, the packet, and I'm the person, I'm the person that goes over that report every month, and I'm the person that talks to the DA, I'm the person that looks at who's in there, what they're in there for, I'm the person that reduces the jail population. The chief deputy has been in here and told you that, and I don't know what point you were trying to make with that list, other than you're upset that you two guys have been caught not doing your job. Here again, you've got to go through the report, and you've got to do some math. And apparently, you did not do your homework.
I did my homework.
I'll go back through the schedule again, and here we are in March, and we're opening up, doing open bids. And so we finally get Montgomery Technology come in to, to get us a final bid. Contract awarded, six, one. Mr. Richardson didn't vote for it, for repairing.
Jail population and staffing, were we on that, or were we... Regional jail discussion. Commissioner Waters?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, our jail committee's gonna meet on Thursday, February the 27th, at 11:00 a.m. Currently, we have eight people that are interested in serving on the jail committee. One of the things that's surfaced in the last few days is there is some interest for a regional jail, or a group of counties, to take over the Terrell Prison Farm. Not sure yet whether that's gonna be a possibility or not, but we have a total of eight counties that are in that area. That's, Dare would be the closest, then Terrell, Washington, Hyde, Beaufort, Martin, Bertie, and Choone. As you will, as most of you know the cadillars, Martin and Bertie are, and Choone are doing a feasibility study now to enlarge the Bertie and Martin Regional Jail. This prison farm in Terrell County was built in 1998, and it has a capacity of 620. It was, it's supposed to be closed temporarily for six months, with the state taking a look at it. Not sure whether this is a possibility, but we will be discussing that in our jail committee meeting in February, last week in February.
Brenda Hamilton Investigation. Commissioner Richardson?
Well, once again, I'm chairman of that committee, and I probably will call a committee meeting sometime in the next 30, 30 days or so, simply because this whole issue of the Bremer Hamilton death is dragging, it's buried, we rely, we're having to rely on the sheriff to deal with the people that are doing the laboratory work. The answers, we've not had good answers now for three months. It is time for something to happen on this particular issue. This woman and her family deserve answers, and they deserve a better report than we're getting now. And one of the reasons that I'm saying the things that I'm saying is that the chief de- And one of the reasons that I'm saying the things that I'm saying is that the chief deputy and the sheriff, he's an elected official, you know, did not have the respect for Ms. Hamilton, her family, and this board to show up tonight. And this is a new tactic that the sheriff is playing on commissioners. He failed to show up at the budget hearings, and he's failed to show up tonight. And the reason is because he doesn't think that we're gonna agree with everything that he says that he wants. And I'm not sure that all the board's that way. I think the majority of the board will probably support anything that he wants to do. But I can also tell you that there are members of this board that don't support just about anything that he wants to do. So this is another insult to the citizens of Beaufort County laid on us by the sheriff of Beaufort County.
Flood map update. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, I think probably the manager has this one, and he will tell us when our effective date is, and we have an ordinance in here for review tonight. So I'll turn it over to the manager.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Commissioner Richardson's right. The FEMA did issue the effective date, that is June 19th of 2020. Between now and then, we have to get our ordinance in place. You have a copy of the model ordinance that was sent to us from the state that is in compliance with the federal regulations, the state regulations. That ordinance has been updated to insert essentially Beaufort County and the placeholders. It is a minimum ordinance. It models the previous model ordinance that Beaufort County used when the state sent it out the first time when they redid the flood maps. It does not... We based it, we left the freeboard at zero because that's where you were last time. I will tell you that you and Hyde County are the only two counties in this group that have their freeboard at zero. Everybody else has it at least two foot above freeboard. There's an argument there, of course, that people say, "Well, if you make me elevate two more feet, that's costing me money in having to do that." The state does recommend that you add some freeboard. Previously, you had it zero, we left it at zero. Our goal in that is to help educate people and say to them, while you're elevating your house, even though we're only requiring by this ordinance if the board leaves it the way it is, at zero, it doesn't cost that much more money to get you up a little bit higher, and the higher up you are, the better off you are. And sometimes that impacts your renewal rates as well, your flood insurance rates. It could eventually pay for itself. But that is left at zero because that's where it was previously. The big piece for us is that ordinance was sent to the state. We are supposed to get it back from them this Friday. They're going to review it, make sure it's complete and in compliance, that we filled out all the stuff correct. It will then come to you, or actually, you already have a copy of it. We already sent you a copy of it. The big piece for us is the notification now. There's gotta be a public hearing on this. It is not a quick and easy public hearing because it is a land use, it's considered a land use matter. So it has to be advertised in a certain manner. Because there are more than 50 properties impacted by this, you can, you either have to send registered or certified mail to each, I don't mean certified, you have to send mail, first-class mail to each property owner. If it's more than 50, then you can do it by publication, which means you put it in the newspaper a certain number of weeks, a certain number of times, but it has to be at least a half a page ad. So get ready for some pretty good cost on that. But you still also, and that's the challenge for us, we've gotta, we've gotta work with the tax department because the statutes require that not only, if you're gonna do that, you've gotta do it by publication, so you gotta put it in the paper with local general circulation. That gets the folks in the county. Well, there are a lot of people who own property in Beaufort County who don't live in Beaufort County. So we have to take the tax rolls and then send them a letter individually saying there will be a public hearing about the flood ordinance. And all of that's gotta get done, and it's gotta be in place before June 19th of 2020. So it may sound like a lot of time, but it is a, it's a come on, let's go kind of thing. So our planning officers working on that in conjunction with COG, who else is with planning services, and so we think we're on track to get there.
Commissioner Richardson.
I would say regarding what the manager was saying about freeboard, it is definitely difficult to argue. Don't raise this, raise this thing as high as you possibly can. But one of the reasons that we did in Beaufort County with zero freeboard is we have a lot of people who have mobile homes. There are certain provisions that kick in. Once that mobile home gets 36 inches or higher above the ground, you have to hire an engineer. It gets to be expensive having a mobile home. These are low-income people. This is one of the reasons that we did this. The other thing to consider in this is that if you have ductwork that is under the dwelling, that ductwork, the bottom of that ductwork has to be above the base flood. So you're raising it two feet, and it gets to be a bit onerous when you have a two-foot freeboard that you have to raise it. Then your ductwork's underneath it, and you gotta raise it another two feet, so you're just going for the sky with it. And that was the reason that we did this, was to help our lower-income citizens and those who prefer to live in mobile homes as opposed to others. Now, I will say this, the flood elevations, the base flood has been dropped considerably in the new ordinance, and I will say this to you, please, if you're building a new home, don't build according to these new base flood elevations. You really need to build according to the old base flood elevations from the old map, and that can be as much as four feet difference. And the old ones are based on the 1913 flood event, which actually happened. So just caution the public, don't get carried away with these new lower base flood elevations because they can get you in trouble.
Just kind of pile on that, Commissioner Richardson. What we have tried to message continuously to people about this is just because you get pulled out of the flood zone, you know where you live, you know where the water is, and don't let somebody in Raleigh or in DC tell you that you don't need flood insurance when you know you need flood insurance. Because it will be a whole lot cheaper when, once you're out, if you're out of that area.
You get the preferred rate, which right now is less than $500 if you're out of the flood zone, so you get a big hit. I know of people in this very town that are paying $4,000 a year for flood insurance, and when the new maps come out, they're out of the flood zone, they don't have to pay anything.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Any a second?
Second.
Hold those in favor, raise your right hand.